If anybody would like to, if anybody would like to participate in public participation, this is the time to write your name, please.
I'm sorry, did I make the announcement? My apologies.
No problem.
Okay, your favorite?
My glasses, I don't have to read too many things. Is Jonathan here?
He's gonna be, he's gonna be called multiple times.
I cannot talk, I have nothing. I know, I'm here. I could always tell them my Christmas list. Listen here. My favorite restaurant. Last chance, anyone, anyone? Yes, sir. Okay, I'm gonna take it?
Let's go. Good evening and welcome to the special public meeting of the Lawrence City Council. Today is Monday, October 21st, 2024. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Act of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person, in the city council chambers, and remotely. Anybody that requested the Zoom link for this meeting was provided to the city clerk office. This meeting also via through the digital platform for the Lawrence City Council, which is the Facebook Lawrence City Council page, as well as the YouTube Lawrence City Council page. Rocco Malancle, please.
Counselor Levy.
Present.
Counselor Laplante.
Present.
Counselor Luzon.
Present.
Counselor Del Rosario.
Present.
Counselor Santiago.
Present.
Counselor Marmo.
Present.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counsel Vice President Infante.
Present.
Counsel President Rodriguez.
Present. Rocco, I mean, please join me for a moment of silence. Now, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to proceed with public participation. Anybody that wishes to speak, they have the time to write their name. The public participation goes as follows. Everybody's gonna have two and a half minutes. At the two-minute mark, you're gonna hear a beep indicating that you still have thirty seconds. Please refer to this council as a whole, not to any individual counselors. Also, if you want to celebrate the comments, please hold it for the end of public participation. The first person that we have on the list is Francisco Obrea. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Francisco Obrea, B R E A for the record, eighty-five Colonial Road. And I just want to apologize again when I invited everybody to sign up this chief. When you're the one actually who have to do that. But because we all grouped together, so I take that responsibility. But we are here tonight, Mr. President, member of the council, to let you know that we totally disagree with this home rule petition that come from the turf floor to you. And we would like to see if you actually can kill this thing here tonight before you go to the State House. Also, we find out that this thing is not even, is required for the state or for Washington DC, from anywhere. So I do not see why they want to make some changes when, excuse me, we have people who actually been working for a long, long time. And actually, they've been giving, they've been giving their own time to represent the student and represent their district. So I believe this is a total disrespect and anti-democratic move. And we want to make sure that this thing don't pass tonight. Again, I just want to let you know that community, they are listening. They know what you guys doing it, and they will respond when the time come. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Good evening, counselors. My name's Richard Russell, thirty-four Cross Street. I'm a firm believer in the Constitution of the United States, one man, one vote. Not one man, six votes. The last time somebody tried one man and six, six million Jewish people lost their lives. I don't need to see another bloodbath caused by what can be caused with this charter going up to, charter change going up to the Beacon Hill. I'm against it. Unfortunately, I'm a taxpayer, but I still have to pay my portion of my taxes towards the schools. Something I don't like doing if this is gonna happen. Thank you.
The next person that we have is Luis Robles. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, councils. If you guys read my long letter, sorry for making it so long, but if you didn't, I just wanna make-
Name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. Luis Robles, one eighty-three Abbott Street. If you didn't get to read it, then I just wanna make one point, which is there's been a lot of concerns about districts and representation of minorities. If you decide to go with an at-large council, if you guys could consider that one of the appointed members be from a minority group, be it white, black, Asian, Middle Eastern, et cetera, from the community, that way we can at least alleviate some of the concerns about minority representation in the community. And that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Juan Manny Gonzalez. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council President Rodriguez, and Vice President Infante. My name is Juan Manny Gonzalez, one Colonial Drive. And we're here tonight because one of the biggest questions that's still popping up is the rationale behind these changes. What specific issues or challenges are we trying to address with this change for the school committee? Especially as we already heard that this is not mandated. Governor Healy, Attorney Governor Driscoll, the commissioner, no one has called, or at least we haven't made aware that somebody's calling and knocking on the door that if we want to take control of our schools, that you need to reformat the school board. I stand with the school committee board as it stands right now. I think that these people are dedicated, they professionals, they're educated, they taking time from their families, they campaign, they go through the whole process to get a chance to serve. And they should be commended, not disrespected. Because it's not every day, as you can see, that even going by the last election, the turnout was so poor. And when you have individuals like this that served even through receivership. And now that we have a superintendent in place, and they wanna get a chance to get up and work with them, now we're trying to take that opportunity away from them. So what is this gonna do for participation in the future? People are watching, and they're probably gonna say, this is why we don't run for office. This is why sometimes we, we have spot that doesn't get filled, because they don't believe, they're losing trust in the process. And I truly believe that this is a very important, before you take this vote tonight, vote your conscience, look at the whole issue. I know that it's been a while since you guys going back and forth. But I truly believe that for candidate attraction, I know that we're looking for better. We gotta be careful what we mean with that, because we can go from the top of this building down to this chamber and said, what's better? What does that mean? So I wanna recognize the actual school committee members that are here serving. And I stand with you respectfully, and I thank you, council, for allowing me the chance to speak before you.
All right, the next person that we have is Pedro Payano. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Pedro Payano, five ninety-six Hable Hill. Congratulations for the productive meeting you had on Wednesday. I hope tonight, there is not an attempt to delay the process. Tonight, you have in your hands a very important decision to make that is going to impact in the future of our children. Keep what's best for our children at the front of your decisions. Thank you for your leadership, and I hope that tonight, you will have a very productive meeting. Thank you.
All right, then the next person that we have is Victor Martinez. Name and address for the record, please.
Victor Martínez, ten Mason Street. I would like to have someone to, be quite prepared to say what I wanna say, to say in Spanish. I don't know any people can translate for the-
Manny. Jonathan Manny, do you mind?
Be quite for your contribution, say in Spanish. Yeah, I wanna say, you know, translate for the, for this guy, because everybody-
Por favor, refieras al concilio, el concilio en total, no to ningún concejal individual.
No, no, I just say translator for him, because I think everybody here knows Spanish, you know?
Yes, but what I'm saying is, make sure that you don't refer to any individual counselor, refer to the council as a whole.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna say anything.
You're good to go.
The first thing I wanna say is that I've been living in this community for thirty-five years. And I have been part of the process that's been happening in this community, particularly in the Hispanic community of this community. And in the nineteen nineties, as a community that we are, Hispanic community, we celebrated the wins and successes of our community. And seeing this process play out today will be something within our community that would take us back within the Hispanic community. And then? And one of the things that would hurt the most is to see a majority-elected Hispanic council to take away the voting rights of the majority Hispanic community. I hope. And I hope that the decision made today is one in where it keeps the power of electing our school committee members.
Member, yeah. To be elect by the, by the city, by the vote.
To be elected by the vote in the city.
Gracias. Thank you so much. The next person that we have is Angel Méndez. Name and address for the record, please. Oh, sorry, it was Jonathan, but that's fine.
Good evening. My name is Angel Méndez, sixteen Litz Terrace. I don't want to be standing in this place, because for me, it is a shame. Because the last time that I had to be fighting for the school system, the threat come, came from outside. Now it's coming from inside. I feel powerless. This proposal lacks continuity. It's orphaned. It's coming from the state? No, the state created a mess. It's coming from the mayor's office? Who has the experience around the mayor's office to just create this mess, creating this division in this community? You as a chairman, now you have the power of taking care, dismantling the school committee that was elected like you. Shame on you, if you don't think about it. Who is the person responsible for this? We are supposed to be united, working together, being careful, because our kids are roaming around doing terrible things, and nobody's taking care of that. We have too much violence around us. People just, in those places, doing wrong things, and we don't have authority. Now that we are planning to take this control from the state, now we are creating this turmoil, this mess. Who is the person responsible for that? Who is advising the major about this terrible thing? We have a brand-new superintendent, we have the school committee that was prevented by the state to do their job. And now they are responsible for the mess that we have. Allow them to work. By the contrary, we are supposed to be extending that the amount of year that they need to be working, because they want to work. I have a great respect for them, like I have for you. Who is responsible for this mess? Thank you.
Right, the next person that we have is Counselor, I mean, Mr. Jonathan Guzman, a school committee member, Guzman.
Good evening, counselors. As always, Jonathan Guzman from thirty-nine Len Street. And the first thing I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna keep saying it, we don't have to do this, in order to start the process of taking control back of the Lawrence Public Schools. This has been said multiple times by the Commission of Education in multiple occasions that the process can start. But on the contrary, what we see from the executive office is that we have to do this in the local level in order for them to come to the table and have discussions. So we're choosing to not start the process at the city level, because we wanna do this. The other piece of, you know, is, I want you to remember those that if you were in a school committee once, to remember how will you feel if, when the time comes for us to do our job, if you were sitting here or standing in front of you, and then somebody, rather than working with you, tries to ship the power away in a way that can remove us from this system. If that doesn't make you think otherwise, thinking about the piece of moving from our large races back in nineteen ninety-nine as a city to per district to ensure that we have full representation at the table. The other piece is making sure that when we take on the things in front of you, you have a comprehensive ad hoc committee proposal. That we found at that point, it was a success. Do not place the city through this process in where it will open a lot of doors for concerns in many levels of government. We wanna make sure that we can serve our students, our parents, and our community.
Thirty seconds.
Give us the opportunity to do so. Nothing should happen. Thank you.
All right, and then, and the next person that we have, the next person that we have is Myra Ortiz, school committee member Ortiz.
Good evening. Myra Ortiz, forty-five Norris Street, Counselor Ortiz, School Committee Ortiz, Coach Ortiz. My accolades go on and on and on. I was speaking with the city clerk and wondering what can I, what is there left to say? What is there left to talk about? What is there left really to land with this council, my partners in government, that would change their direction of their mind? And then I thought to myself, I don't know what's on their mind, because we haven't had a conversation. I haven't spoken to any counselor here, except for the one that represents me. And when we're partners in government, that means we have conversation. I'm the expert in this space. I'm the expert on what the school committee needs. I'm the expert in this space, because it's where I served, it's where I'm serving, and therefore, la punta de vista should be learned from me, because I'm also a stakeholder, a grandmother, and a mother, a taxpayer, and I've knocked doors for many of you. I've signed your papers. I've mentored some of you. So in that, todo es respeto, we haven't had a conversation to say, mira, look what's in front of us, what does democracy mean? What does it mean to this, this body? What does it mean to our city? What does it mean to work as partners in government? We've talked about Holyoke and South Bridge. That's what it means, to be a partner in government. There's no fighting over there. They said, ahora el pueblo, and they meant it. And they meant it. We move forward together with unido, one voice, because it's our kids that are in public schools, not charter schools, not private schools, that are being impacted. The equity is not there. This is racist. This is a racist act when you take away voting power from people that can't afford to go to private schools. That you have to enter a lottery for an education. Ojalá, you get into a charter school because you win the right to an education. I don't wanna gamble with our kids. I don't wanna gamble with our democracy. And I don't wanna gamble with our relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that we have, the next person we have, it's online, we have Dennis Lilly. Lilly, can you hear me? Dennis Lilly, now is the time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good evening, counselors.
Name and address for the record, please.
My, my name is Tennis Lilly. I'm a resident of Lawrence. I live at forty Spruce Street in Lawrence. I am also the head of the Conservation Commission, where I've served for the past twenty-three years. Like all of you, I am a public official. Unlike all of you, I am an appointed official. And we generally have two types of public officials. We have folks who work in the regulatory realm, people who enforce environmental laws or zoning laws or handle licensing and permits. You know, these are the folks like myself on the Conservation Commission, the Zoning Board, the Board of Health, et cetera. And then we have other government officials who represent the people. Government officials who have an oversight role. Government officials who legislate or make policy. Government officials who make major hiring decisions. Government officials who have the power of the purse, who vote on budgets or authorize spending. That is an area where in, not just here in the Commonwealth, but throughout the United States, voters have had the opportunity to choose their representatives. The people send their representatives to act in their place to do this work. Here in Lawrence, we have an elected school committee, just as most communities throughout the country do. We have an elected city council that represents the people in managing the affairs of the city. The same voters who elected all of you, and I can only assume you were all satisfied with the outcome of the last election. I don't think any of you jumped up and said, wait a minute, I think the voters got it wrong. Those same voters also elected members of the Lawrence School Committee to act as their representatives. Now, the members of the school committee don't manage the
Thirty second.
Okay, we hire people to do that. We trust the voters to send their representatives. Trust the people, trust the voters. Don't take their voice away. And if all of you do come up with a plan that does that, have a referendum, put it on the ballot. If you're going to make such a drastic change to the charter, let the people vote. Don't make that decision for them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now public participation is closed. All these limits are gonna be submitted for the record. So now, now councillors, we have Aiden, one forty-eight twenty-four, with this establishment of the home rule petition defining the governing structure for the Lawrence School Committee. We, the last thing we have, it was a charter objection. At that point, we called for a vote and it was charter objected. Before recalling the vote again and open it for any type of discussions the council wants, we have a few things to put everything in order. We need to clarify one question that was in regard to a special election and the clerk will make that a statement.
The, um, one of the councillors proposed a motion to have a three-year elected term for the school committee. And I stated at that time it would require a special election. And maybe I misspoke. We we do have elections every year. On the, um, even years like this year, we have state elections and federal elections. On the odd years, we have our city elections. We would have city elections on the even years if we did a three-member, a three-year term, excuse me, for the school committee members. It would not necessarily require an additional election. However, it would require an additional ballot. The ballot that we get for state and federal elections is put out by the state and it's run through the machine. I don't have an answer for you if that machine could handle two different ballots, one for the state and one for the city. My first thought, just based on the issues we had with the primary this year, is that it could not and that we'd have to have, you'd have to cast two separate ballots in two separate ballot boxes, which we would have to go out and get more ballot boxes. But it would be one day. You could have the elections on the same day. I just don't, logistically, I don't know how we would handle a city and state election on the same day. So that would be something we'd have to research if that's something that the body wanted to consider. But as you make that decision, I want it to be properly educated that it's not a, we do have an election every other year for state and federal. But that's a ballot that we get from the state. It's not a ballot that we print ourselves. So that printing at a minimum would be part of the process. It would be mailed out separately as part of the process. The staff would be managing two different elections at the same time, which I do think would be a lot. But I just want people to be understanding, it's not necessarily a separate election. It'd probably be on the same day, but I think the amount of work involved would be a lot. I just want to make sure people make an educated decision, but also, I didn't want to misspeak, so I want to make sure that people understood where I was coming from. That's all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have, we have the mayor's office here that before they they didn't have an opportunity to speak. If you would like, now this is the time.
Good evening, Octavian Spanner, senior advisor to the mayor. The the ask of the mayor in your consideration is to consider if the mayor during his absence, that he can have someone represent him, a delegate or someone to represent. I can give several scenarios in which there might be an emergency where in which the mayor, let's say for instance, there's a national emergency or a state emergency. And the mayor, he needs to attend the meetings. Let's say with a governor or state delegation, whatever it may take. And there's a a school committee, I mean, there's a meeting. The body is meeting, then he would be without representation. I would like the the legislative body to consider that. In addition to the other ones, it's based on your decision as a whole. What you will consider to be the best option.
Council President.
Councillor Luson.
Can I ask senior advisor a question?
Sure.
If I may. Senior advisor, how many times have the mayor attended the committee meetings? The school committee meetings?
I cannot respond to that.
Why not? We don't keep attendance?
Probably he doesn't have the number at this
I didn't have that question, otherwise I would have
Council President, can I ask a committee member, how many times have the mayor attended the school committee? Meetings?
Councillor Luson, he will, he can probably provide you an answer. But I mean, if we don't have the zap count, we cannot take it as a fact. It's an opinion. So but you can definitely ask.
Yes, thank you, Council President.
The school committee, through the city charter, through its own rules, meets every first Wednesday of each month. The mayor only participated at the inauguration meeting to choose the vice chair. Other than that, the mayor has not come to neither of, to none of our meetings.
Thank you, committee member Guzman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Council President, the the current status of the the school, the Lawrence Public School is that the LEE board is the, is in charge and control. It's the state, it's state controlled. And in defense of the mayor, I mean, we don't have the data and I don't want the public to be confused. I can provide you with that information if it's, if if the council, the body so wishes. I can do that and I can provide a city councillor with the response.
Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Advisor. Just a fact about the LEE board and the receiver. I was, I was part of the school committee back in two thousand thirteen and the current mayor at the time, we met every month. So it's it's a, it's the same thing. So it's a matter of just visiting the meeting and being part of the meeting. That that was the question. Thank you. Councillor Luson.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Your answer.
Councillors, at this point, before I call, the question, it is important to recognize that we have an underlying motion. Madam Clerk, read the underlying motion, please.
The underlying motion before this body is to adopt the ad hoc committee's recommended proposal with two changes. One was a change to section five point two regarding the composition. It'd be changed to three elected at-large members for two-year terms, three appointed members for two-year terms and the mayor, not his designee. That was what the body was discussing. That was a motion made by councillor Infante. It was seconded by Mr. Del Rosario, councillor Del Rosario. And there had been two friendly amendments. One was a changing of the number of terms for the appointed. And um, one was for the mayor and to clarify, not the designee. So it just, um, I don't know if you want to change any of that, but that's what's before the body at this time.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, just a quick clarification on that. The current, uh, the current, um, the current home rule petition that we have in front of us, with these two specific changes that is being made, the current petition have to reflect these two changes. Because throughout the documents, this this changed the entire document, councillors. It changed the number especially, yeah, especially provision five, which now something to clarify is that on the amendment, yeah. On the amendment, we have that now the body that is gonna elect the appointees is gonna be the city council. So section five, therefore, is no longer gonna be part of that, of that, of the home rule petition. And other than that, there is other minor changes throughout the documents that need to be reflected with this amendment. So we want to make sure that we have that for the record. Any other?
Councillor Marmel did at the last meeting that we had, I believe that was your recommendation that was accepted, was to make those edits throughout the document.
Yeah. And any other, any other motion, questions or discussion at this point?
Council President.
Councillor Luson.
Motion to withdraw the document.
There is a motion to withdraw.
Second.
Can you hear a second? There's probably a second. Discussion on the withdrawal. No discussion. All else in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Roll call.
Any names? Name, roll call, please.
This is on a motion to withdraw the document. Councillor Reyes. Councillor Marmel?
No.
Councillor Santiago?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario?
No.
Councillor Luson?
Yes.
Councillor Laplante?
No.
Councillor Levy?
No.
Councillor, Vice President Infante?
No.
Council President Rodriguez?
I would, no.
Councillor President? At this point, Councillor Del Rosario.
Uh, thank you through you. I would like to offer Vice Chair Infante a little amendment on the, on the emotion. After hearing the discussion and also hearing the the school committee member Jonathan, I think we should add the designee for the mayor so they can have representation. If the mayor never been in a meeting now, maybe the designee should be in for the mayor. And what I'd like to add to that is that we put a time clause into it or about this designee should be assigned by the mayor for at least two years of the term of the school committee members elected. Why is that? Because we don't want somebody going into every meeting, a different person. So if if the vice chair set that friendly amendment, that should be added to the home room petition.
Second.
Madam, no, it's not, is that a friendly amendment first? Madam Vice Chair Infante, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I accept.
You accept the friendly amendment, okay. The the friendly amendment from that, uh, from the councillor vice president Infante is to have the mayor designee. And the way that it was presented, it was to have that as an appointee. The question will be now that you have set the friendly amendment, councillor vice president, the process for that designee gonna be just a major designee? Because is this designee at this point? Or it's gonna be as a regular appointee as we have the others?
Council President?
Yeah, councillor vice president Infante.
Thank you, through you, Council President. The way that I'm seeing this, and this is, I mean, I'm only one councillor. This is, this is my my councillor opinion. I do not want to see the mayor having different people. And it's, I would like to add strictly for emergency purposes only. If there is a a pressing issue that the mayor's office or the mayor needs needs to attend because it's, I I I see that as a mayor, certain things come up. Then, the way I'm seeing it, user doesn't need the same person in order to continue the the business of the school committee. I don't, I don't, I'm not seeing it as every single time that the mayor, you know, the mayor sends someone only for pressing situations.
And, okay, so basically, just to clarify, the designee from the mayor that is gonna be assigned for two years period and only is gonna be considered when the mayor is is out or it's an emergency?
Council President, sorry. Through you, Council President, and that's an example that the senior advisor did present, that sometimes things come up. And and I think the senior advisor, may I call him?
Sure.
Through you, Council President. Senior advisor, I want to make sure that the office under understands my my stance on this. I think it's important for the mayor to be there. I don't agree of the mayor not being there, only not attending. But I think we all seem to be on the same page that this is, this is an important topic and an important situation. And I'm fair, this is why. My proposal is something that I'm trying to meet in the middle for everyone. For those who are actually paying attention can can see that because I've had received messages from from the public stating that. So I just, I I just want to make sure that you understand where I'm at.
In response, through you, Mr. Chair, I think that's a reasonable ask. It's fair.
Council President.
Uh, councillor, Madam Vice Chair Infante, do you finish with the questioning?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Councillor Luson.
Council President, isn't that the major's responsibility to be part of the school committee?
Uh, that's part of the charter, yes.
Part of the charter, so, um.
As of right now, it's gonna be the chair, but it is important to recognize, Councillor Luson, that as far as that is core, the body, the committee, the school committee functions. It's like any other committee, when we have core, we continue business. So those those emergencies that is being defined, it's 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 something that doesn't, doesn't lack the core.
I I understand, but I think we should, uh, we need to start making excuses for the major's responsibility. And I know this motion, if it gets approved, is gonna change the the charter because that's what we're doing. But if the mayor is not attending the school committee meetings, he's not attending the two committee meetings. So that's one. Also, when you said to, to, when you mentioned, I think councillor Rosario mentioned that, or Infante, is one the designee to to send one designee? If that means that, let's say that the the mayor attends a meeting and the designee, can they both be at the meeting? That would be to vote, no?
No, that's not the case.
Can we clarify that too?
The case is as follow. As is presented, it's a designee for two years. And as as per the petition of that senior advisor and message from the mayor is that in case of an emergency, he won't attend and he will send a designee to maintain the presence of the mayor.
And Council President. And thank you for explaining that and and thank you for the intention of making the clarification. But I think not only for this mayor, let's think about any future mayor. We have to, uh, they have to know that it's their responsibility to be present at every, at at the school committee meeting. But it's about the education of our, of our children, of you. And and it has to be there. We we need to keep that in mind. They, this mayor or any other future mayor has to be part of the school committee meetings.
Yeah, no, Councillor Luson, I understand and and your message was passed to the senior advisor and subsequently to the mayor. This this modification changed people's mentality, but that's what we're here to discuss. Councillor Laplante.
Thank you very much. I, not in favor of this amendment that's been now part of the new amendment, the Infante amendment. I just think that adds a level of complexity that's unnecessary. Previous speakers already talked about the mayor's responsibility. We have gone through wars in this country. We have gone through pestilence. We've gone through a lot of different things that would require, I can't imagine that we're gonna be facing something that we haven't faced before that this, that this city and its mayor has to deal with. I just don't think it's necessary. If the mayor can make it, we elected the mayor. We elected this mayor, we'll elect the next mayor and we'll elect the mayors for as long as we continue to have mayors in this city. And it is part of the responsibility of the mayor, ex officio, to be a member of the school committee. Whether the mayor decides to attend or not to attend over the course of time has been the prerogative of that mayor. I know that the vice chairs have been very active as leading these meetings for many, many, many years, on and off, when mayors have other things, other obligations, other responsibilities, other conflicts, scheduling conflicts, for example. So or would be showing up late. So we've always, we've always had a hand up the rudder at the school committee, leading the meetings. So I don't think, frankly, I don't know if this is going, in my estimation, going to kill this proposal, but I don't think that this propos, that this is necessary. I also want to, yeah, I'm not gonna say that. So we, no, it's okay. No, it's it's not that. So I've been, while I wasn't so crazy about the charter objection, to be quite honest. Uh, we kicked the can down the road a few, a few days. Not a huge fan of that, but the councillors have their right to be able to do that and can exercise their rights and that was exercised. Having done that, the good news behind that has given me potentially a little bit more time to consider and reconsider some of the ideas and some of the discussions that have been taking place. And listening to constituents who have called or texted or emailed me and let me know what their thoughts were, and I think that's important. So a little bit of, a little bit of distance, frankly, was a little, little helpful. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, having said that, I, I want to offer, I want to offer a substitute amendment to this, just to see where we all stand.
Uh, depending on the motion, we will decide if it is in order.
Part, so if I make the motion, if someone seconds this motion, then it would be in order? Is that how this would work?
Uh, if it is in order, we'll let you know, but let me put it on.
Sure. So this, the motion that I have is to remain at seven. Six, school committee members that are elected, six that are elected, and the mayor, who's our ex officio.
So is that, is that this?
And, 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 and at large, at large.
At large.
This, and I'll explain myself, and if, if this gets a second, I can explain myself a little bit more.
Go ahead.
That's the motion.
Oh, six at large and the mayor.
Six at large and the mayor, everyone's elected. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, discussion.
Uh, there is a motion, wait, wait, wait. There is a motion on the table. It's in order, properly second by Counselor Luzon, and now we open this for discussion. Counselor La Plant?
Thank you. You know, learning a little bit more, I'm, I'm not a history expert, I'm not a historian. I love history and I like to read about people that were in our seats before we were here. I love reading about the mayors that were here before us. I love reading about and understanding and learning how we got to where we are today because it's with that context, I think all of us become better leaders. So, while I'm not a historian and I don't know everything about the city, I do enjoy listening and learning. Having said that, here's a little bit of history about our city and how we got to this particular point. I'll keep it brief. There's only two times, there are two charter changes that we've had in the last hundred years. One was in nineteen thirteen, and with that, we had, we had a six at large and one mayor, right? Seven. When we decided in nineteen eighty-three to change the charter again, the people voted for it, and what was it? Six at large and one mayor. So what changed? Well, in two thousand, or nineteen ninety-nine, someone I think said earlier, and around the, you, you were there and you remember, two thousand, you, you get the timeframe, right? In that air timeframe, the Department of Justice had, what was the right term? The Justice had a, um, a requirement, what?
An injunction?
An injunction against the city because of Voting Rights Act violations and wanted us to make sure that our minority population was rightfully represented at all levels of government. It ju, it changed our district seats substantially. I had all of Tower Hill back in the day, like the entire Tower Hill, now it's split up in two. And the school committee went from at large to districts. I think we've taken care of the problem that the DOG was trying to take care of back in nineteen ninety-nine. I look around us here, I look around the school committee, I think, I think what that injunction was looking to accomplish was accomplished. So I want to go back to where we were before we needed to change things in nineteen ninety-nine, which was an at-large school committee across the board. So as residents, we talk about democracy, we talk about how great it is to have democratic action, right? If I love three people from counselor from District A's area, or the counselor from District D's area, or wherever, wherever it is in the city, I can vote for those three people, or whoever I want to vote for. It opens up the entire city to a voter as to who I would want to vote for in that. And the hope, the hope, the hope, the hope, is that we are all educated voters, we have done our research as voters, and we've selected the person or people who we think is going to represent and do the best job for our children and for, for the city. That's the reason why I'm offering it. There's always a counter to the argument, and I'm well aware of it. I'm well aware of the counter. But if you start, we had success for, for nearly a hundred years on this before we had a change, before we had a change, and we made the change and the change that we're supposed to do. So thank you for seconding my motion.
Any other discussions around this, but, uh, this motion, which is six at large and one and the mayor? No appointees. So seven members. Any other discussions on this? Madam Clerk, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names?
Roll call.
Please, uh, roll call, please.
No.
Counselor La Plant?
Yes.
Counselor Luzon? Counselor Del Rosario?
No.
Counselor Santiago?
Yes.
Counselor Marmo?
No.
Counselor Reyes?
No.
Counsel Vice President Infante?
No.
Counsel President Rodriguez?
I vote yes. Motion fair. Motion fails.
Can I make one more comment, if it's okay? Not on this matter, but on the underlying motion.
It's in regard to the underlying motion?
Underlying motion.
Okay.
So, um, Ca, Counsel President, I, I've heard from people who don't know where we stand on this issue. I'm going to tell people where I stand so there's no confusion. I think I just offered what I would be if I was king for the day, what I would offer, right? But I'm not king for the day or any day. But compromise is difficult, compromise is challenging. We live in an imperfect world. There's a lot of things that we like, there's a lot of things I like about the Infante amendment, there's some things I'm not crazy about, to be quite frank with you, but we need to work on a compromise. I don't, I want us, the overriding thing is, I want us to have control of our schools again. That's what I want. I want to make the decision. I don't want to do it by default. I don't want the governor, I don't want the legislature, I want to have our voices heard so that we can make sure that the people that we represent have their voices heard at the state legislature. So, so that's, that is where...
Please, respect. Counselor La Plant?
So the reality is, is that it's not perfect, but, but we need to work toward getting to a place where, unless something was overridingly awful, overridingly awful, and by the way, this is not controlled by the mayor, under this particular motion, it's actually going through the council. I'm not all that crazy about that idea, to be honest with you. I like the way that we do it with, with respect to department heads, when things come down, appointments are made, and then we ratify them up or down, I like that better, but that's not what this amendment is. This amendment is, apparently, we're going to be getting names from individuals and going through resumes and determining who the appointments are going to be.
That's right.
Counsel President?
Uh, Counselor La Plant?
I'm pretty close to wrapping this up, and then I'm going to be quiet for a long time.
I can be with them.
Okay. So anyway, that, that's the reason why, and I just, I just want, and, and the other thing too, one last thing, while I've got the floor real quick, there's been talk about, and I, and this is frustrating, Counsel President. Uh, this is very frustrating, and I share, on the other side of this barrier right here, many of the comments from the people who spoke or have spoken regarding where is the state? Where is the state on this? And, and it, it, it troubles me that, um, that we don't have, I'm not looking for them to tell us what to do, I'm looking for advice and counsel and things we can bounce things off of, that's what I would like, and that's not necessarily what's happening. And so we're left to do, use our own best judgment on this, and to me, the process could have been better had we had, if we had some folks from the states where we can say, listen, what's the number? How effective is a nine person? How effective is having all these other things? What have you seen in other communities? Asking questions like that would have made this process just a little bit more improved. Thank you.
I want to make a motion for the purpose, yeah, eh, eh, take, eh, out the mayor, eh, like a president, because...
Right now, we're not considering the mayor as the president.
Correct. Very clear. Make, eh, like, I, the counselor, eh, by both chair and vice chair?
Yeah. To clarify from this, uh, as of, as, as of how we have right now, the mayor is not a president of the school committee by default. He will be chosen. He could be the mayor, but it's not, it's not by default. He got to be elected by the members of the school committee. As what I can read on this proposal, Madam Vice President Infante, uh, uh, can you, based on your amendment and based on your, uh, and experience in the committee, there is anything that indicate otherwise?
So Counsel, Counsel President, I, I want to, there's, there's, there's a lot of conversation about the responsibility of, of the mayor. So if, if we're, so I have chairperson, yep, thank you. And I also would like clarification from the charter too. There's been back and forth, there's a strong, there's, there's a strong point about holding the mayors, whether this, today's mayor or, or mayors of the future accountable. So I do have under section A, um, the first, uh, section five point two, section A subsection three, chairperson, the mayor shall serve as a seventh member of the school committee and as his chairperson with full, with full power to vote, which right now also reflects our city charter, and if we're gonna, and if we're going to discuss the mayoral responsibilities, then, then we should be consistent.
So the mayor is, uh, is, is considered as, as the chair of the school committee as, as for your amendment?
Yes.
All right. So the friendly amendment is to remove the, the, the mayor as that, uh, as that, uh, as the chair and to be elected, uh, as part of the process?
And also that, again, that's, that's sorry through you, Counsel President.
Do you accept that amendment?
No.
Okay, that's not a, it's not being accepted. Counsel President? Uh, Counselor Rosario?
And at this point also, with all the discussion, I would like to remove my amendment if you accept for the mayor.
So no designee, you're removing your friendly amendment?
That's correct, if she accepts.
Uh, Madam Vice President, uh, Counselor Rosario have removed his friendly amendment, so you're going to have to modify the amendment if you want that part. If it's not, the mayor will have, uh, to be on the meeting.
I accept, like, like I mentioned, Counsel President, if, if we're going to be speaking about the mayoral responsibilities, then let's stay consistent. So I accept, um, Counselor Del Rosario's removal of the mayor's amendment.
Okay, Madam Vice, Madam Vice Clerk, uh, Madan, Madam Clerk, could, do you mind reading the, the motion as states, just for the record?
Sure. Um... It was the, it's, it's... Three elected at large for two-year terms, three appointed for two-year terms, the mayor and not his designee. So we're back to that.
And the mayor will be the chair of the school committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Counsel President. Uh, I would like to, uh, ask committee members, Sandra...
Edwards.
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 Attorney Edwards, to, uh, to please, I, go ahead.
I, I just had a quick question, uh, Counselor La Plant. I appreciated your history lesson, but I want to speak specifically to the settlement agreement between the Department of Justice and the City of Lawrence that you referenced. I believe that that went into effect on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and two. You referenced the injunction. To your knowledge, or anyone else on the, the panel's knowledge, has that injunction been lifted? So I, I, I respectfully, I don't think that it's fair, the reason that the, that the injunction was in place was because the Hispanic community was disenfranchised. It was an act to re-enfranchise, and I don't think it's fair to cavalierly say that we're looking at what appears to be diversity now within the city council, and that means that we don't need it anymore. I think that what we need to do is see if the injunction has been lifted. I don't believe that it has been. I did my research over the weekend. In addition to doing my research, I wrote a letter. You also mentioned advice and counsel, and I couldn't agree with you more. As lawyers, we know that that's important. I wrote a letter to our city council asking him two specific things. The first thing I asked him was whether or not he knew, if the, our counselor, Tim Horton, I asked him if he knew whether or not the injunction had been lifted. Additionally, I asked him, as this is drafted from the Department of Justice, does the proposed construction of the school committee violate the actual settlement agreement that was entered into on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and two? I respectfully ask that we give him a chance to opine and offer his opinion on whether or not it, it was, and if the injunction was indeed lifted. I think that, in a sense, we're putting the cart before the horse. Say we find out that the injunction wasn't lifted, so we have to adhere to the settlement agreement. And then we find out that as this document was written, this settlement agreement was written, we are required to have six elected members of the school committee. Then we're wasting our time, and I care too much about this city to be embarrassed. I think that the, the problem is that we'll, we'll be doing all of this and we'll, we'll look like we don't even know what we're doing, and we're embarrassing ourselves. So could we just take a second to see what Tim Horton, the city attorney, has to say on this? We, aren't we scheduled to, to meet again tomorrow? Can, I, I asked him if he could have give me an opinion by seven o'clock tonight, but in all fairness to him, I sent him my missive at about nine thirty, ten o'clock last night. That's not fair to anyone to give them a day, but I ask if we could just give him a minute to opine on the injunction and whether or not the settlement agreement from February two thousand and two has been violated by our proposals.
All right, uh, counselors, we have, uh, we have a question, a question that was raised to the city solicitor, not to the council, to the city solicitor, Tim Newton, and, uh, and the school committee member Edwards, Attorney Edwards, is asking the council to, uh, to get an answer.
To, to get our attorney's opinion on, this is such a cogent issue. We cannot proceed without a directive. We have to know.
Yes.
Counsel President, thank you. School Committee Edwards, I think based on...
Counselor Luzon?
Uh, thank you, Counsel President. I think based on, and, and, um, the participation of the school committee, we should consider, uh, table this matter until we get an answer, uh, from our legal, from our attorney. I think it's, it's, it's logical, and, and I'm suggesting, oh, should I make a motion? That we should table this into tomorrow, hopefully?
It is important to recognize that tomorrow, we have it already in a scheduled special meeting for this specific matter. Uh, the meeting is scheduled for six P.M. The mayor, the, yeah, uh, the, at that time, we won't be able to have that meeting because we have early voting that is going to go all the way until seven P.M. Uh, we signed our delay, uh, but in case that this council decide one way or another way, or the hard way, we, we have a scheduled meeting for tomorrow.
But Counsel President, can I make a motion to table this matter?
There is a motion to table.
Second.
Properly second, no discussion on the table matters. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any names?
Roll call.
The ro, roll call, please. I call the roll call.
Um, Counselor Reyes?
Uh, no.
To table, so you're saying no?
Motion to table until tomorrow. Motion to table until tomorrow.
Until we get...
Until we get the legal advice. No to table, but hard to ignore this.
Counselor Marmo?
Councilor Marmo?
Yes.
Council Santiago?
Yes.
Council Del Rosario?
No.
Council Luzon?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
No.
Council Levy?
No.
Council Vice President?
No.
Council President?
I vote yes. What's the count?
Four to five.
Four to five, motion fails. Uh, councillors?
President?
Council, Council LaPlante.
I just want to, you know, that, I'm, I'm glad that the school committee member has done some research and, and has provided some information and made the request. The question for me is timing. It's the eleventh hour. We've had this proposals now for a while. There's been meeting for a while. And while it sounds fantastic that we need to have this process answered by our city attorney, I don't understand why we're waiting until, right up until the last minute to take a vote that we're going to have this discussion. Because I think, for those of us who have been following this discussion, and at least talking to folks, uh, timing is of the essence on something like this, and I realize we're going to say it's just one more day. It's just one more day. And Council President, I'd like to have some order in the, in the chambers, please. Thank you. So just one more day, well, it's, 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 it's part of this is the delay, Council President. And so, it's not an easy decision. And I, I think all of us can agree with this. I think there's some councillors who are on the front lines, we're all on the front line, some more than others, right? Because some have stuck, stuck out their necks and put out an amendment. Or stuck out their necks and tried to tweak something, and tried to find some sort of compromise. And I respect that, I really do. And so, but, but we need to make a decision.
Council President?
Motion will take and Council Luzon.
And I'm going to respond to half of your opinion.
Just focus on the matter.
Yes. We are, we were presented with a legal question. And I think it's in the best interest of this, um, item to get a legal answer from our attorney. Uh, thank you for, um, school committee Edwards that actually did a research. But I was personally not aware of that. I knew about the history, and I knew about the injunction, but I didn't know it was, uh, it was not lift, I don't know if it's lifted. So, if we don't get an answer, it, we are wasting our time. Because basically, besides taking the vote away from the resident of Lawrence, we also maybe doing something that looks like it's illegal, or something that we're not supposed to be doing as a city council, uh, members. So, waiting one day, it's not going to kill the motion, because the motion is still at the table. But at least it's going to give the council a legal answer. And thank you, Council President.
All right, no problem. If there is no more, uh, questions, uh, I'm ready to call the, the, call the questions. Councilor, Council Marmo?
Um, this is out of curiosity, there was already a motion on the table, and we continuously accept other motions. So I'm just trying to understand the process as to why do we continue to delay the first motion that was presented before us, and yet we're accepting other motions without an issue?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's actually in order. You can put a, a motion on top of a motion, and then on top of the motion. Uh, and then there is also friendly amendments, those are part of the process.
We're making decisions on those other motions.
Yes.
And yet.
Which is basically a modification of the underlying motion. And instead of just doing it as a friendly amendment, if the proposal is not, uh, is not accepting it as a friendly amendment, and then the council will have the right to amend the motion by a vote. We're ready to call the motions, if it is no other questions. Councillors, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Well, but I mean, she's not here, we, we, I call the question. Any ayes? Okay, roll call.
Councillors, this is on the underlying motion for the three elected, three appointed, and the mayor, made by Council Infante and technically by Council Del Rosario. Quite a long time ago. I'm going to start with Council Levy, who is not here, I know her as absent. Um, Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Luzon?
No.
Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Council Santiago?
No.
Council Marmo?
Yes.
Council Selina Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote no. What's the count?
The count is five to four, right, five, three.
No, it couldn't be five to four, because there's not an answer.
It's five, three, one, yeah.
So motion carries.
But you're doing a home rule petition?
Home rule petition.
You need two thirds of your vote.
Uh, all, as a courtesy, I recall, uh, Councilor, uh, Council Levy's, um, vote. Call the, call, call for Council Levy. The underlying motion. It can be objected. Councillors, just to, uh, go on the parliamentary procedures, there is a motion to, um, to, to reconsider.
You want to make a motion to reconsider, anyone on the prevailing side?
Any, anybody on the prevailing side.
Motion to reconsider.
Nope, the prevailing side would be.
Prevalving side.
Council Luzon? Anyone that voted no, you're on the prevailing side, because the motion failed. It would be Council Luzon, Council Santiago, Council President. Any of you could make a motion to reconsider, it would have to be seconded.
I can make a motion.
You cannot make a motion, you're right, I apologize, yeah. Um, so Council Luzon or Council Santiago, if you would choose to make a motion to have that item reconsidered. But otherwise, Council Levy was absent, and her vote is recorded as absent.
Any councillors that would like to reconsider? No councillors that would like to reconsider? All right, motion fails. Councillors, at this point, at this point, the amendment and the proposal that was presented in front of us has failed. Any other motions? Any other motions?
Motion to adjourn, it's, that's the only thing.
There's a motion on the, on the floor, properly second. There's a motion on the floor, properly second, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Guys, have it.